I'd like to call our meeting to order, please.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
You gonna go first, or you want me to go first? I have to have roll call.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Laura, have roll call, please.
Uh, yes, Mrs. Carter?
Here.
Mrs. Couch, Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Mrs. Winter?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, let's start with the present of the floor.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
We'd like to thank you for meeting with us. Uh, we met the first time when we did, um, this, um, phase one. It's been very successful and we'd like to present the phase two to you. The gentlemen are here. And they are going to tell you the success that we have had with phase one. Um, you know, three of you were there. And so you know what the presentation was and how well it's done. So I, I don't think there's anything else, is there, Ms. Dr. Tanner?
Uh, the main thing is, um, to let you know, we, first of all, we have a apology for not giving this out to you early. We, our email has been out, uh, quite a while. So we're pleased that it's up, uh, again, but that's really, um, getting, um, the presentation to you earlier. And then the second thing is, is we went through the development, uh, and discussion about phase two. Uh, as you go through, you'll see that, uh, we asked, uh, in their back of the envelope to really go in and do an in-depth analysis. And then also to give the options, so that we know that we have areas we can cover and we want to look at. Uh, at a minimum, some of the discussion earlier had been around, uh, Lucas Grove Elementary, because now that that is back up and running, uh, successfully. We've been there for a year now. I wanted to look at that and do a comparison between that and its sister school, or the school, whatever you might call it. Uh, so we could do, uh, an analysis of that. And then also, if we move forward with that, look at some of the other issues that we realize are really, uh, what we consider cost draining, uh, in terms of, um, use of resources for some things that are very much, uh, related to energy. So that's what we'll go through. Uh, if you're comfortable stopping at any point, um, throughout the presentation, if you have questions. Um, but walking through the options that we did before, which is, um, hi.
Sorry.
Both chairs.
Would you like for us to give you a time to breathe?
That was a new test form to see if he could make it through the house station.
Give users excuses, an economic development prospect, so.
Oh, we'll accept that one. For sure.
Uh, good evening, afternoon. Um, my name's Stan Dowell. I'm with ABM. Uh, my partner here, Good. Uh, Justin Brewer, two of us worked on phase one, financials together, and the technical solution to the schools. Thought I might back up just a little bit for those of you who were not, uh, present for phase one to understand the principles of what we're talking about tonight. The statute we work under here in Virginia allows government entities to look at operational expenses and the means or process to reduce those expenses through a program that ABM offers. The differential between what your operating costs are today and what we can get to two, that differential that we create, it's called guaranteed savings. Those savings that we guarantee funds the project. Um, the advantage to this is, uh, a school board, for example. Doesn't have to come to, to the board supervisors and ask for money. What we're going to talk about tonight is using the money that the school district is already spending in a more effective manner. And as a result of that, other than spending it with the utility company, we're going to use it to fix the buildings. We're going to highlight what phase one did for you and how beneficial it has been for the schools. And I think they can attest, Doug can attest too, on what, not only what it, what's forecasted achieve, but what it's achieved today. Any, any questions on that? We've done, uh, a couple dozen projects in the state, all over four counties, cities, and schools. And, and sort of one of our, uh, my key accounts, we've loved, uh, serving the district here. So that's really what we're going to talk about. This is just a quick agenda. Talk about phase one. Talk about, uh, the opportunity to do, um, use the same principles we used on phase one, um, to work at, um, Locust Grove. And some of the needs that we will be able to fund and some of the, the needs that, uh, we just can't fund through this program. Um, so we're finding the equilibrium between getting the things done we can, uh, and using this process to do that. So real quick on phase one. Phase one was about six point two million dollars. We did fifty different measures in the district, including lighting upgrades, mechanical systems upgrades. Fuel switching is just, uh, buying the commodity at the cheapest cost, fuel, oil, and natural gas, and other such strategies. Propane, excuse me. Um, we did some building automation upgrades to make sure that the building operated at a cost-effective manner. We can put it under control. And, uh, we did some water conservation measures as well. Uh, the forecast for the project was to save thirty-two percent of the annual utility costs. Uh, early projections from both the school representatives and our own, and that, or we were ahead of forecast. So the project looks great. Again, it's, was roughly a six point two million dollar project. Again, this was funded completely from the savings that we were able to generate by putting in energy effi- uh, uh, efficient equipment. We didn't have to come to the county to ask for money. The district didn't. We just utilized the utility savings to fund this project. Um, so you can see the combined, uh, energy and operational savings were about four hundred thirty-nine thousand. But over the term of the agreement, which is fifteen years, the savings are going to exceed costs. Thereby, you see a significant margin. Typically, these are done under a tax-exempt municipal lease, not a bond. There's certain advantages to that structure for the, for the district and the county. It was done, again, as a fifteen-year term at a very effective rate, two point six percent. Um, if you look at the last time interest rates were this low for this extended, uh, extended period of time, it was almost sixty years ago. If you look across the United States and in Virginia in particular, the average age school in Virginia is, is between forty-five to sixty years old, which is about the time interest rates were this cheap. So it's why, why they were building all the schools at that time. Cost of capital was, was cheap. So it makes it very effective right now to take any operational savings that ABM can generate and leverage that into capital. So it's a, it's a very attractive time to do that. Um, again, it's no adverse effect on the general fund. It doesn't put increased burden on it. It actually extracts money out of the general fund that's not being, uh, effectively used because of old inefficient equipment. And the results of the, again, of the program are guaranteed. They have to be by statute. So if I, for instance, here, the four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars annual savings, uh, ABM has to guarantee it at the end of the guaranteed period, which is each year. If we're short in any fashion, we have to write a check to the district for the difference. So in this scenario here, let's say we save four hundred and thirty against the four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollar guarantee. We have to write the district a check for the difference. The reason is that those savings at four thirty-nine is what is used to make the payment on the lease. If the lease isn't achieved, then it would put increased burden on the general fund and effectively would have, um, um, you know, I think violated the covenants of program, so. This is a list of needs. It's a busy slide. I really apologize, but it's, it's really mesh portrayed. There are a lot of things that these buildings need still. While we funded the six point two million, there were still a lot of stuff left on the table. Because some things can be capital intensive, um, some things that are needed in the school building don't produce the savings. They're just a, a capital requirement. So some, a lot of those things we had to eliminate. But as we looked at this list, what are the things that we could fund? And actually, I would tell you, this list just here was valued at about somewhere between two and a half to three billion. But we can't fund all that. So we're not recommending, to fund this, we would have to come to the county, uh, the board supervisors and ask for additional funding and we're not, we're not doing this.
And they interrupted here because what, one of the, uh, requests that we had is if you're in there doing a review, do a comprehensive review while you're there.
Sure.
Um, and point out to us, uh, all the areas that you find, uh, from your perspective. So you'll see things like on Orange Elementary School, addition of heat to kitchens. Some people are surprised that we have no heat in the kitchen. Uh, but we don't. And, uh, so you'll see things like that there, but we really asked for them to do a thorough review, knowing that we would, again, have to analyze each one of these and the needs. But long term, whether or not, um, we may move forward right now or later, they're going to come, they're going to reappear. Because it's something that just has to be addressed sooner or later, um, as we move forward with the capital plan. So that's why you see this list being more extensive, uh, initially, but we'll.
So you use the opportunity here to find out all the problems.
Yes.
Whether they're with, well, I mean, a, a large, a large number of them.
Without all the problems.
And, uh, and, uh, and some of them are not going to be cost-effective in, in this program to, uh, to fix.
Related to energy.
That's correct.
And they would have to be looked at separately.
Right, that's correct. So we wanted to, generally what our, our clients are saying, let's, let's fund as much of this as we can to the ABM program. So if we have to go to the taxpayers or the board supervisors or somehow look at some other means to pay for the things on the list that can't get funded, we can at least say we've done everything we can with the money we, we are that appropriate. Just trying to be effective with it. So this is a list of things that we are going to be able to fund. It's, uh, I think fairly comprehensive. Um, if you looked at it, it's, what we're going to address is the majority of the, the electrical and mechanical. Uh, the automation needs, which is the control system, we want to be able to mirror that to the rest of the schools.
Excuse me.
Sure, sure.
Now you say, all of these were what you looked at the first time around. Have you, have you have a list of which you did do and which you did not?
Um, this, uh, this is.
These are two, yet to be done.
Yeah, this is.
If you go back to, let's see, that, that slide, that's, um, that's what has been, uh, reviewed in terms of the phase two analysis.
Okay.
And, and again, and what I would characterize this is, this is only related to energy-consuming devices. This is only related to HVAC type systems. This is not meant to be a complete facility.
Okay. So this is, these, these are, these are phase two. And, uh, I was just asking you through, as a list of phase one that was with, that you did, or you looked at and you didn't do.
Now, phase one is complete.
Phase one is complete. We've already implemented, uh, a, a, a number of lighting and control and HVAC upgrades. And the balance of the schools, that was about six point two million dollars.
Okay.
And we maxed out our energy savings there, and then with the addition of the new school additions.
Also wanted to mention that of that six point two million, the close to two hundred thousand dollars of that was items that we chose to add over the, of what was already in there.
Which, which would not have been covered by their program.
Correct.
So, so it left a balance of needs in the building, especially at Locust Grove, opened up. Ju- um, Justin's going to show you a comparison of operating costs of a renovated school by ABM and one that isn't. So you can see the, the differential between the two. It's, I, I think it's pretty revealing.
So if you explain, if, if the movement from the slide that's full to this movement.
Yeah.
Uh, help, Doug or someone, help explain what then came off.
Many of the, uh, you mentioned the, the, you mentioned heat in Orange Elementary School. We have several kitchens that don't have heat and even more of them don't have cooling or just have winded units.
Yeah.
So all of those came out because they weren't, uh, either didn't have enough return to work into phase two or were too costly to add into the, the total that would be funded.
Yeah, tho- those would be, those would be systems that actually would consume more energy than save energy. So it, it, we couldn't get the economics to, to pay for themselves. So again, this, what we structured as we looked at all of the needs is, let's just, let's hone in on the things that can be fully funded through the program.
Okay, I'm trying to get a better handle on, on, uh, what happened in phase one. You spent six point two million. Uh, you have reductions of four hundred and thirty-nine, five twenty. That is a guaranteed reduction.
Yep.
And the actual reduction was what?
Well, we're not through the first year of the guarantee, but all projections on the guarantee for the first years that we're ahead of, or tracking ahead of the guarantee. So we're not, we're not at the end of that first year.
Okay. Okay.
September is the first year, rounds up.
Yeah, September will be the first, the first reconciliation of the first term of the, the, uh, guarantee period.
Okay, then what does it mean, the phase one, two payments totaling five sixty-nine? How does that fit into that?
That means we've paid, you've paid down the loan by that amount since the, that's your dilution rate on the loan since the time you took the loan out. So you've paid that much off, right, Doug? About four hundred and seventy thousand?
In September, another payment in March, and we'll be making the third one this coming September. And the pleasant surprise to us was that we expected to reimburse ourselves from the savings after the completion date of September thirtieth. But what actually happened is that we saved enough during construction period that ended September thirtieth of last year to pay full, to cover the first payment of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we didn't have to borrow from ourselves and then pay ourselves back.
Okay, all right.
So phase one had a, again, it was fifty different measures that we did in the building. So I, I really wasn't prepared to talk about those individually, but it was a very comprehensive, a very large list of.
I was just trying to get the, the results that we had thus, that we were experiencing thus far.
I, I think by all indications, very good, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to say, part of the reason we're in the phase two is because when we initially did this in phase one, we were only operating in eight buildings. So the empty building on twenty was left out of the plan. Now we're coming back. And what's really driving this most of all is getting that building on twenty that we didn't do that to, uh, back in shape. Uh, so we can get the energy savings there that we can get from the others. And it expands to some of the others on this page, but the, I would say the big money items are going to be Locust Grove Elementary School and the replacement of the roof at the field house.
Okay, field house being at the high school?
The, the Hornet Tech Center. Hornet Tech, yeah.
Hornet Tech, okay.
The one that's leaking. Yeah. Bad shape.
Okay.
Uh, so again, just real quick, I don't, not a lot of time on the comprehensive approval, uh, approvals, because they, they can't get funded through the program. It's, it was a fairly significant, uh, ticket item, about three, three million bucks. Uh, they would have, we, we would have had to ask the board of supervisors in tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual contributions in order to fund that. It was deemed not appropriate to do that at this time. Let's just focus again on maximizing the savings that ABM can generate, uh, in, in order to fund the capital needs, which is about one point two million dollars, just slightly over that. Again, it's no incremental capital required. You add any money to the program, it's just, again, utilizing your, uh, savings to the fullest extent possible.
Now I see automation and control upgrades, uh, uh, on, uh, some of the other schools. Is there a reason that they weren't included in the first, uh, round?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, those, uh, there were the costs, the incremental costs they had those projects in, and they would not save as much energy as some of the other things we did, or had a lower cost.
So you were looking, you were picking the low fruit on that first one, even though some of this may still be useful.
Yeah, choices. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
If your main buildings were functional on the old control system.
Okay.
With the new controls in place, we'll be able to run them more efficiently and have control from.
But our, but our, uh, our savings on investment won't be as high as what we did earlier.
Well, that's made up for by Locust Grove Elementary.
Understand, okay. Uh, the Locust Grove Elementary will have a big return.
Absolutely.
Now, now we want to. Remembering the first time they came, the, the question was six million, so.
The, uh, per person, they, the, yeah. So the, uh, what we're trying to do now, though, is put a consistent control platform out there for the district, so that they can control everything from the same type of system. They only have to have knowledge of one control system versus multiple, and only have to stock parts for one control system. I think the savings are there significantly. So this program, um, I, 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 we're really excited about it. I think it's going to do a lot of good, uh, for the district. I'm going to ask, uh, Nathan, uh, Justin. My best friend.
He left Nathan home, didn't he?
We did, we did. He's going to talk about the technical solutions at, uh, what he's going to put.
As I go through this, if you want me to stop and dive into any of my items, just let me know. Throw something or just, just interrupt, go through. Um, to start off, at Locust Grove, it's an exact mirror image of Prospect Heights, and so we learned a lot in phase one by implementing measures. Um, it is a newer facility, and it also comes with a lot of opportunity for energy savings. The lack of commissioning and lack of controls commissioned through construction on the project. Although it's new, um, sometimes bid spec projects will end with inefficient lighting. And not only is it inefficient, the lighting levels throughout the building, um, in a lot of classrooms are lower than they should be. And especially in the gymnasium, the lighting levels are very low there as well. And it's inconsistent throughout. The boiler there today, very large, uh, dual fuel boiler, it is required to run all year long, just for domestic hot water. So today, it, my truck said nearly a hundred degrees, boilers are on it to consume energy to produce hot water. And so we would decouple that and put in a separate system, um, for the domestic hot water, so we keep those boilers off on a hundred degrees outside. So, so that's a large, that's a large piece there.
Makes sense to change.
With, and we've learned this lesson even over Prospect Heights, new building, but there's some failed weatherization and some roof wall penetrations. We're not only losing cool and, and warm air, we also threw some pipes, um, last year, or a couple of years ago, Prospect Heights. So we, we've learned a lot there to go ahead and get that building wrapped up and tightened, so that does not happen. It's a very complex system, HVAC system there at Locust Grove Elementary, but it's got, the control system is not smart enough to keep up with it. And we saw that with, uh, Prospect Heights. If you had the ability to have visibility within your building, that only helps the maintenance staff, that helps the operations staff run the building more efficiently. In my opinion, that's the reason we're overdrawing a lot of the savings in phase one, because the staff has more visibility into what the buildings are doing. With the older control system, you can kind of see, yeah, it's seventy-two and it's on. Um, but it doesn't dive deep enough for Bradley and John to really jump in there and diagnose things. Or Doug to operate the building properly, especially for special events and things like this. Um, I've talked, there's limited zone control on some of the older con- control systems. Um, meaning you turn your building on, the whole building's got to run, even if we're just using an annex building for a special event or something of that thing. So breaking those apart and not having to start a whole building to utilize, you know, a couple thousands per foot of it. Um, the controls that are in the buildings that were not, didn't have new controls installed in phase one, they're very proprietary in nature. Um, individual light foot, especially those parts are not as readily available, um, anymore. So the kind of, you're, you're running to fail. And, uh, getting those up, and those are some of the worst ones, that have no visibility, no remote access. So say the maintenance crew is out at unit bill working on something, they would either need to drive back to the shop to look at the control system or hope Doug says, in his office, that is, that is. So those, getting all those on one platform, um, the maintenance staff has been trained on that platform, um, through phase one. It's training, having great new technology doesn't mean much if the staff's not trained on it. So we brought everyone up to train, to training, and, uh, will continue to do that ongoing as, you know, software upgrades and things like that happen. Um, then we go over to the Hornets Sports Center, like asphalt roof on a, on a building like that, a lot of granular loss, a lot of leaks today. Um, so we would leverage some performance contracting, overdriving savings, um, to put into the roofing budget. Um, it's kind of a critical path item, but there's, that entire building's appalled them during that point. And so it's, it's not something you want to do in September and or, you know, in the middle of the school, unless you're, you're not working after hours or something to that effect. Um, but it would be with a, you know, a better commercial grade standing seam roof. Instead of the asphalt shingles, there's a lot of dips and valleys on that, on that, uh, building, and the asphalt apparently not working out very well. And it, there's no questions on the technical side of that, and I'll just pull Dan up to talk about the financials.
Just one question.
Just a second.
I was just going to say, we did explore someone offering this roof, or that's one question we raised about if you're going to go in and work on this. Is there any, um, uh, savings for us to at least, uh, explore that, so do you want to?
Right, we, we looked at all renewable sources. Um, it's not only good in the public eye, public doesn't get boilers and chillers, but they get solar panel. Um, but unfortunately, the climate in Virginia, meaning energy costs are relatively low compared to if you go state north or state south. And there's no state incentives. Um, like there is if you go north or south. So we're kind of stuck in that middle. There is a federal, um, thirty percent that we can monetize, you cannot tax exempt. But that's just not enough to make it fund. We're looking at a sixty, seventy year payback for those solar panels. So outside of PR value, they have no value to account.
I had a question. In the, the older buildings, uh, you were talking about zoning, is, are the, the systems in place, can they be zoned? I mean, are they, they, I, I, I can't, I don't know what kind of systems there are. Are they two pipe, four pipe, or what, I mean, what kind of systems in there?
That is more of a, uh, a block zoning on scheduling. Instead of saying, okay, the, the building's occupied from six AM to five PM. This side is, but, you know, the admin area or this, this classrooms on that side, they actually end at three thirty. Just giving more, more flexibility to the zones of the control system, temperatures and stuff.
Okay, okay, all right.
I would mention that there's only one building in our system that doesn't have some individual room controls. And that is the, uh, former Prospect Heights building that we're in. That has zones that take up six to eight rooms, have one thermostat somewhere. So we'll eventually, I guess, have a better preparation of where the system can.
I can see the context on that one.
Every building has individual room units that can be controlled up to individual rooms.
When you did the hot water change out, what type of hot water heating did you go to?
Uh, we went to, um, Prospect Heights, and we, we scoped the same thing for Locust Grove building there. Um, we scoped a high efficiency condensing tank style, um, domestic water system. I, I believe the brand's Lock &amp; Lock. So it's a ninety-three percent efficient with a very high recovery rate, so we don't have to hold hundreds and hundreds of gallons. We're only holding about a hundred fifty, but we can heat about a thousand an hour.
Okay, and that's why you didn't go with a tankless style because of having to have that storage?
That and water quality. Um, you get a lot of granular and, uh, just, there's a lot of flush stuff in the water. And that would be a maintenance nightmare on the, uh, on the tankless. I did that at my house, and I'm on a well, I had to since pull it out, put a tank back at my home house.
Thanks, uh, Justin. Real quick, we'll, um, want to show you a comparison of Prospect Heights, pre and post, and what we're forecasting for Locust Grove, pre and pro- uh, pre and post-construction. So you can see Prospect was running at about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in annual utility cost. Right now, it's running at, um, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, pretty significant savings, about a hundred and fourteen grand, uh, nearly cut in half. Uh, Locust Grove, we're going to get a little bit lower than Prospect Heights for a couple reasons, but, uh, savings there, about eighty-three thousand. So significant savings and gain there. So just to show you the comparison of a building that has been retrofitted versus the one that isn't. So the differential is Locust Grove, um, not upgraded, is running at two-ten versus, uh, one that has already proven itself and is running at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, so.
How does that relate to e- energy savings, either BTUs or kilowatt hours or whatever? I mean, I know it attracts the money somewhat, but, uh.
Yeah, there is a, uh, there is a way to take the cost per square foot, convert the BTU per foot to normalize for, um, whether it be water savings, uh, thermal savings, or electric savings to normalize. I, I don't, the engineers didn't.
Well, we do all our calculations in, in the, in the units of energy, and then we monetize it for, for this sake. So all the calculations we do are KBTU per square foot, and so we normalize the fuels.
The energy engineer didn't give me that number, so I can't set it for you tonight. Um, but what we're, I, what we're trying to quantify for you is that the dollar savings are going to be great enough to service the debt, the, the lease.
So the, the two forty-five, was that a, that a colder winter? Is that why?
We actually typically will look at a two-year average of the utility spend. So that the anomalies of weather, the anomalies of occupancy generally work themselves out over two-year, uh, a two-year window.
I was just wondering the difference between the two forty-five and the two-ten.
And I can actually explain that one.
Okay.
For, they had the, the same issue, but the oppo- opposite effect. Um, Prospect Heights was over ventilating the spaces, um, meaning it was just dumping tons of outdoor area. Whereas Locust Grove Elementary is not ventilating enough, and so it was running, it was running lower.
So with the additional outside area, you have to heat and cool that area, and it would be an even higher cost.
Okay.
What, uh, question for you. Um, you said you had a lot of energy loss, uh, especially at Locust Grove. How do you measure that energy loss? How, how do you figure that energy loss?
Through, uh, envelope, building envelope type stuff?
Okay, how, what process do you use?
Generally, our guys will do thermal scans. We have guns, take pictures and do thermal scans of the roof, the windows, doors, to see where we're getting leakage.
Okay, now is that with any, you've got blower doors on when you're doing this, or just the natural?
Just natural. We don't pressurize the building.
Okay, so you don't do the pressurization, pressurization?
No, we're trying to get it to mirror the way it's actually going to operate, personally, right?
Do you remember what the, uh, what your projections were for the Prospect Heights school in terms of, uh, annual costs?
Construction costs?
No, no, you said the, uh.
The, the savings are a hundred and fourteen thousand.
That's what I'm saying, okay. But what, what did you, that's what you're experiencing now?
No, those are, those were our engineered projections.
Oh, those were the projections?
Because we're not to the end of that first year of the guarantee period, I can't tell you what it actually is.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
We have done construction audit, but, but, or definitely showed positive direction, but we started in September and a full audit, we can check it once.
So we're going to get another briefing in September?
Absolutely. The other thing I would point out is to Doug's point of that, the construction period savings, which is the period when we start construction until we're done with it.
Uh-huh.
That, that period actually saved enough money to make the first year payment, I think is, if, but that's a.
And that wasn't even in your projec- that was in addition to your projections?
Yeah, we don't guarantee those construction period savings because it's, it's really hard to track.
Sure.
We don't know when things are going to go and be installed and.
So you're guaranteeing from the time your construction is complete?
That's correct. Anything that's, anything that's, uh, pre-construction is all for the school's use, and they use to make that first year payment.
Okay.
Everything over and above the guarantee is also for the school to keep.
Okay.
So if we finish ahead of, uh, schedule on savings the way we expect, uh, those increased savings will be for the schools to use for some of the other things on the list here that didn't get funded potentially. For some of the other things on the list here that didn't get funded potentially.
Okay.
One question for you, in the cost savings, you converted over from one fuel type to a different fuel type. Are there any adjustments in here for the lower fuel costs? Since that, uh, the actual, say propane was, say, at three dollars, and it's at two dollars now. Is that calculated into your figures at all?
It is, when we give the final, when we give the final report to you and present it to you, we'll show what the energy costs, how energy costs affected the final dollar savings. So you get, here's the unit savings and the dollar savings and what the fuel adjustment, uh, might have been.
So your fuel adjustment is in?
Yeah, it would've, what it may have done for you.
Just for clarification, in terms of the design of your program, a- a- as I recall, you are not, a- as a contractor, you're not sharing in the savings?
No.
At all, you're, you're, you make your money off the equipment and the installation and design?
We're a design-build contractor, you hire us to do this work for one point two million, and all savings are for the school's use.
Cause there are programs out there that, that are called sharing in, in the savings.
There are, uh, uh, there are.
But, but this, this is not that.
That is not.
You're not sharing at all in the savings.
And you didn't ask my opinion of that one.
You, you answered a question I didn't have to ask.
This, this, you know, this is a guaranteed thing. I mean, if we make any savings beyond that, that's could look gravy. Or we make any savings beyond the fifteen-year period, that's gravy.
Well, we have upside, but not downside. In, in the shared savings programs, you have downside and no upside, really, because the, usually it's a scale that, the better they perform, the more the...
Bigger percentage they get.
The bigger the percentage they get.
Yeah.
And there's an incentive for you doing that, but this is not that, that type of program.
What I like about this program, what I am, the reason I like it so much, is at the end of this, the school gets something significant that they otherwise couldn't get. This is a, a capital program that the other ones can't get funded, or they'd have to come to you and say, I, I need money.
Well, the other thing, by them being able to keep the savings, there's an, there's an incentive for them to manage the buildings. Uh, Doug, for example, and his staff to manage the buildings as well as they can.
Yeah.
Take advantage of the equipment.
That, that's what we like about the control system. That's what we like about the control system, allowing them to manage that more closely. Uh, this is just a slide, uh, to demonstrate if we operated the building from the, the left-hand side of the screen, and did nothing, continued to operate as we do today. What would our costs be over the next fifteen years versus taking action? And you can see it's a differential on do nothing, have about three point six million dollars over fifteen years, versus what we're showing about, uh, projections of a million, one point seven million. So the differential is, is really significant.
Now, are you, uh, factoring in energy or inflation or any of that in that?
We, we do use national projections on what, we have a couple reports that we cite on what is the expected inflationary cost on energy. Water, natural gas, uh, propane, fuel, all of those get factored in when we look at this. And on an average, if you used an escalator somewhere between two and a half to three percent, you're gonna be, there's some years you, uh, we have seen utilities take a seven to ten percent increase, and then it's flat the next year. So it generally normalizes at two and a half to three percent.
Okay, so that's one point seven five in, in fifteen-year from now dollars?
Uh, I don't dollar cost average it, no.
Or is that, or is that? Uh, so, I mean, this is, so this is in today's dollars?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Um, let me, let me go to this, it's, it's a bit of an eye chart, so it's, I, I just wanted to show you the way that the program works. The area in blue is, are all the savings or the funding sources, like, and, and then the white area are, is the cost of the program. So based on the way that the program is set up right now, over the next fifteen years, this program is actually gonna top, save the district, just short of fifty thousand dollars more than it's gonna cost the district. So it's gonna be in a cash flow positive, uh, situation. Now, the way that the cash flow shows up right now, if you look at column K all the way to the right, you see the negative years in parentheses. When we actually set up the lease, uh, I will, I, I can, um, adjust the amortization of the loan, so that at any given year, the school district is gonna be, uh, at a cash neutral position, never at a negative position. So we can, we can easily adjust that with a tax, uh, exempt lease. We're forecasting right now at two point seven percent with Bank of America, who did phase one, the school district, they're a national provider, they, they, um, really provide excellent service to us and most of our clients. So, um, we've got a commitment for them, while this is on the smaller side of projects that we typically do. A lot of banks are not real interested in this smaller project, but because Bank of America done phase one, they, they hung there to do this project, so we'd appreciate of that. They're, they're a good partner maybe, yes.
In terms of their loan to you, do they make that, is, is that because this is for the school system? Does that make it a, uh, a tax free for them?
No, um, let, uh, let me explain the nuances of, of the way that the, the loan works. The school district actually takes out the lease, just like any other construction project. They take those proceeds and put it in escrow account. As we complete the project, they pay us. But the payment on the lease doesn't start till the end of construction.
I wasn't thinking of that, I mean, the, the, the funds that you get to put the, to do, to do all the work, the one point two million.
The fact that it's a governmental loan is what makes it tax exempt, not, not, not a function.
Yeah, let me, uh, can I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, kinda jump in here, I'm gonna, just, I'm gonna say this, just, you know, and Dr. Tanner. Is that the, the, the bond market treats this as a, as a debt of the boards, um...
As a what?
As a debt of the board supervised.
Okay, alright.
So we have to work through with Davenport and our underwriting and, and things. Uh, I, I don't know at this point, the, the amounts, you know, and, uh, it's real money, and, and, but it's an negligible amount. The county's not having any, any upcoming bond issues, except for perhaps a public radio system, but that's several years out. Meanwhile, the trend line of our debt service is paying off principal. So we're gonna have to sort through that, I'm looking back at Glenda and I, I get my, my story right, but I, I, I felt certainly a transparency to make you all aware of this, uh, this situation. But the school board is actually coming, you know, very responsive, showing, you know, what the, what the process is, but at the end of the day, it is, uh, debt that goes against the counties.
And as I recall, the, the six million dollar project that you, in phase one, essentially ate up all the capacity we had, Davenport, a- a- and maybe, and then some, frankly. And so we, but that's been, time enough has passed, it probably fits within the capacity, but I guess we don't have the answer from Davenport at this point, but, uh...
Right, and I do have a call into, um, into Davenport, who our, our advisor, just to talk through it with him and, um, and the current scenario. Because things are, you know, things have changed quite a bit since they gave the six million. Um, and our budget has increased, we had a, you know, a tax increase last year that brought our whole expenditures up, which plays into our ratio of, uh, debt service expenditures total, so, um...
The more you spend, the more you can borrow?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there are a lot of, a lot of lines, there are a lot of negative slopes and positive slopes.
I, I understand, I understand.
And so we just wanna make sure our advisor's aware of the amount, what the schedule is and things like that. I, I offer this up, not saying that, uh, the school board should, should slow down and not go forward, but I'm doing my job.
The, what I characterize this debt, uh, it is, is, it's self-liquidating, it, it really pays for itself. It's not a burden on the taxpayer, it's a burden on the savings, right?
I understand, and that, and that's, and that's...
It has some attributes that are attractive.
But e- even though it does show up, it's, uh, it, the, uh, it's sorta like we've got a, uh, a new revenue source of, uh, of savings.
Right, right.
Alright.
Um, you know, this is just to show you the impact on the environment, it's not, uh, minimized, it's, 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 it's pretty significant, um, you know, it's reducing the power in three hundred and sixteen homes. Twenty-five hundred acres, it's like planting twenty-five acre, or so, conserving twenty-five hundred acres of, uh, trees. Uh, you know, it's very positive, uh, it's, it's not only beneficial financially to you, it's beneficial to the district, but, uh, in, in, in terms of being a, uh, a Green Virginia partner, which ABM is, uh, we, we like to highlight what it does for the environment as well. So, a- again, we're, we're seeing about a forty percent savings at Locust Grove, that's eighty-three thousand annual savings, a, a little bit more of, of maintenance savings associated with lighting and some other aspects of it. Which provides the ability to fund one point two million dollars. Projected lease is about two point seven, uh, percent, so, you know, not to belabor that, I, I, it's a great project for, for you, it's an extension, almost a changeover of the first phase. You know, to see the, the contract being replicated, and what, uh, we negotiated as the first phase, and just populate a scope in terms of, should be good to go.
Is it, is it fair to say, as a generality at least, that the, the, the savings that, uh, Locust Grove Elementary will allow you, allow us to fund the, uh, control systems and all the other work? I mean, I, it, my guess is that those are more or less break even kinda things, so...
And then it, and then it puts, and, and even tractor dug in all the buildings, and you can look at all of them from one single location or from the west, cause it's well-based too. So, um, you know, the other thing that I like about the tax exemptable lease for you, should you decide at some point in time when you become, um, let's say your cash was just changes, you have the ability to pay off, I know. I said, I didn't mean that as a joke. But should it change, the fact that it's, uh, tax exempt lease versus a bond, it's easily refinanced, it can be easily paid off, uh, terms which you don't have on bonds typically.
Although two seven five is, that'd be tough to, uh, could we, we can't earn that, but we, it certainly cost us that to, to borrow.
What control systems are all the systems on? Are they honeywell systems?
That's, that's very our expertise.
Uh, the, the schools that have been retrofitted and open platform, um, Altridium is just a framework, um, and that leaves you with choices. Just within two hours, there's probably two hundred vendors you can use to work on, so you're not locked in.
Right.
Okay. So it's software dependent, not hardware as much in that case?
One of the reasons I was asking is, as we do move forward with other county operations, we may be able to integrate with the same system platforms that you already...
It's a platform that pulls security into, good clocks, you can even pull anything into this.
Is there a phase three? Or you think you've captured all of it?
I think you're at the county, actually, that's where we wanna get started now.
We, and we've had that, that meeting a while back.
So you have bricks and mortar ready to go, huh?
And explosives.
Yeah, that's right.
One of the challenges we have is we don't have as many square feet as the school, so our savings aren't necessarily as, as large as...
Yeah, you, you, um, generally operate different types of buildings, a lot of your buildings are gonna run twenty-four seven, um, which you get the most savings when we can take, shut buildings off when they're on our areas that aren't being used, so, um, it's a little bit more challenging for you guys.
But, uh, actually, my question, I, I meant it to be somewhat serious in, in terms of, you know, if, if there's a roof replacement and there's additional installation that can be done, or, or these kinds of things further down the road. Are there other, other things out there that, that could form a phase three?
The, the only thing I would tell you is technology's always changing, like computers, right? Um, you know, we didn't do a lot of LED retrofits in the school district, the LED lights, the cost of LED lights are coming down. At some point in time, even when in low-cost utility environments like you see here, uh, LED lights will be, um, the, 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 really interesting thing about this, it's a ten-year, uh, guarantee on those. So you, you don't have any expense associated with changing out LED lights. We're doing a lot of LED work, but it's an area where the utility rates are a little bit higher. So I think as technology continues to evolve and grow, that's more likely where you see the advancements in the district than, um, I, I think maybe roofs or other types of things, although schools are...
Yeah, speaking of roofs, I'd, I'd like to mention one more time about solar. Which is that even though it doesn't work out financially for us to do solar in the fieldhouse or anywhere else this year, the roof we're putting on the fieldhouse, which is a stainless steel metal roof, will allow us to come back. If the picture changes in five years, we can come back and put solar right on that thing to be ready to roll. And because that roof has a lifespan of fifty-plus years, we won't need to repair it, probably till the solar system fails or becomes obsolete. So, you know, we, we haven't given up, we've just pushed it back a bit.
So I, I think, uh, maybe just in summary, we're, we're, as not speeding for the, uh, school board, but I, I think what, from our perspective as a contractor, trying to get as much of this done before the heating season, for the school, the kids get back, especially the roof. We, we really like to try to get started in July, that meets, uh, with all expectations. I think the project financially, technically is, is sound. I, I think we're here tonight to measure the temperature of the board's advisors on, uh, the project, and I, I think we're to...
What, what is your estimated construction timeframe?
I, I think about four and a half months, four months?
Four and a half, then there's gonna be quite a time with commissioning of the controls, so that, that will most likely run into the New Year, getting all the controls commissioned, but a lot of that'll be done offsite, oh, a mixture of offsite and onsite.
What we want to do is, once we, um, move forward with any, um, agreement, uh, we'll get, uh, a timeline established, so that we could, uh, plot that, of course, because, uh, we do start, uh, school before Labor Day, um, this year. Um, and so we have a, we've lost a, a few weeks in terms of just, uh, the capacity to do some of the major work before the students come back. So we have to establish a, a tight timeline, see what could be done, cause we don't wanna be disruptive to the opening school, we have to...
But you guys have some flexibility in the, addressing the most disruptive, disruptive things first, such that you can...
Try to, yeah, well, sometimes we'll work nights and weekends and work around the school, like it's hours to try to facilitate and expedite construction schedule as possible.
And the, the steel roof, you wanna expedite that, because the domestic mills have taken the foreign mills to court for dumping steel and they're placing tariffs, and steel is going to move up.
Yeah, yeah, plus, uh, the, the certainty is that, that the longer we wait to buy materials, the more we're at risk on cost. And since this, I, I didn't mention this, but since we're, it, we offer a no-change order, this, once the school says go forward and they sign the contract for one point two million, that's the deal. So if the price of steel goes up, the price of co- anything goes up, any movement, we're hit with it, we don't come back and ask for more money. So all this stuff does, is time-sensitive from that perspective, as is the cost of money, the capital. Right now, two seventy-five is subject to market rates, if we don't lock in and close soon, can't go up, can't go down, it's, and that changes. And we don't have much room, we're only fifty thousand positive over fifteen years, a few basis points change in interest rate does put things at risk.
Any change to the contract itself, is it essentially the same contract?
Same, same contract, just to di- just to add a scope, describe the scope and savings, but other than that, all these exhuming terms and conditions, from our perspective, I don't see any reason why we wanna do, it's a state contract that we use and...
Well, we run it to new, um, savings piece and a new scope piece, total of twenty-something pages, as an addendum to the term and conditions that are in...
Any additional comments from the school board?
Yeah, I just would like to comment, something Mr. White brought up, about five or six years ago, maybe seven years ago, there were a lot of vendors going around, uh, giving pitches to school boards. It said, you know, pay us so much money and we'll guarantee you, uh, so much savings. I, and along with the former superintendent, heard a couple of those pitches, and we did not sign any contracts at them, but we did get an idea that there was some savings there. And school system, school board hired a part, halftime employee to walk the schools at night and tell us, and we've gotten some savings out of that, we still have that person. So this has nothing to do with ABM, this person was on before we ever heard of ABM, but I just wanted to let you know that we, we have a halftime position. It's walking our buildings at night and making sure everything's what it's supposed to be, and that's, that, that's showing the savings that we can count on even before we got involved with ABM.
One thing that definitely, keep your eye on the LED, uh, situation, out at the airport, there's a flagpole with a floodlight. It's the only thing that's on a particular meter, and it was averaging five kilowatts a month. Four months ago, gentleman put a LED light in there, there has been zero kilowatt usage, and the light is still actually working, it's not unplugged or anything. The light is working, and literally, instead of having twenty kilowatts of, uh, usage, it is still at zero after four months.
Wow.
So... The, the reason a part of our team couldn't be here tonight, uh, Nathan is the gentleman th- they know who worked on their first phase, he is at, um, Southampton Schools right now, talking to their board, and they're in, and we're putting LED lights in that, that district. But it's, they, they have a little bit different utility rate over there than you do in the main city district.
Utility rate and there's rebates available.
Yeah, there's rebates, that's true.
They're not available with the co-op, on the way down, it's because of Locust Grove.
I can tell you personally that they have really done a nice job. They've worked with, uh, principals and with the school system, um, getting into the schools so they're not disruptive to, to the education. I live close to the high school, so when I was walking, I would walk down by the high school, and I can tell you, like, summer at seven and eight o'clock at night, they were down there working. Cause I just kinda looked like, who is this? But they were, and we've been very, very, very satisfied, and that, right, Dr. Tanner, Doug?
I'm sorry.
We've been very satisfied, yes.
I think they've been, um, over and beyond providing us with any information or any, I think actually I shared some with you, um, information to give us, um, to support, um, their documentation and stuff. And, and, and to echo what Judy said, um, you know, she and I are in town, so if there's any buzz around it, she and I are generally gonna hear it first. And I don't think any of our... And I don't think any of our principals had any problems with them being in the schools. Um, no disruption, easy to get along with, did what they've said they were going to do. They said they'd be there at night, they were at night. Um.
Well, not from an operational standpoint, any issues with the amount of lighting is, has changed and is not as good, or it's not as cool or not as warm, or those kind of issues, have you, have you seen, because sometimes when you start tinkering with these things, it, it takes a little bit of time for people to adjust their own, uh, habits and comfort and things.
It's just the opposite. We now have consistent lighting. All the lights are white. We used to have lights that were pink, blue.
I'm playing this one up here right now, I can hear it.
Some of these, uh, surrounding lights and.
Yeah, you guys really need them.
That's all.
You guys need hard, you guys.
And the, uh, the newer light bulbs last longer. Uh, also did want to mention, you know, we're on the subject of LEDs, that we have LEDs on the outside of all of our schools. In the parking lots, the, the pole lights, we even did that, we funded it ourselves at, uh, Lucas Grove Elementary because the savings on that was so extreme. And we had about half of the old type lights that were out anyway. So rather than replace those and then these kind of guys come back with LEDs, we just went out and did it.
And I'd just like to, um, to make sure everyone's clear on the roof. Because it, it's listed in here, um, so just don't walk through.
Yeah, we already had, uh, enough to fund most of the fieldhouse roof budget. And what we were able to do, after we did all of the, um, controls upgrades in the other schools, the other things that we felt were crucial, we were able to fund above the remaining twenty percent of that roof out of performance contracting, meaning we don't have to ask more money to finish our roof. So it isn't fully funded for that, we just wanted to make sure you all did.
It says roof replacement here, but it's not fully funded for this project.
Well, the locker rooms you don't need to worry about, because that's where they take showers anyways, so water. Yeah, tell them not to worry about.
Well.
No, I was at a basketball game a couple of years ago and they had to stop the game because the roof was leaking.
Graduation, we said, with an umbrella, look at my, my son's eighth grade graduation.
Do we have any, uh, questions or comments from the board?
Lee, I was, I was going to add something to, which Doug, um, or these gentlemen didn't add. Um, right as we began the first phase of this project, we had a major issue. Was it at the fieldhouse with the boiler?
That's correct. It was actually the chiller.
Okay, the chiller.
Before we signed the contract.
Before we signed the contract.
When we signed the contract and they agreed to do the replacement. And if the contract hadn't gone through, they would have billed us for it, but they agreed to work it into the contract. As part of that two hundred thousand dollar contingency, if they did the contract and funded it all that project.
That was a huge savings.
So, and which was a, a savings res estimate?
Um, I think the cost on that, I'm quoting you, was probably in the eighty thousand or anything.
But they stepped up and did, they didn't have to.
Uh, one, one of the things I like about this is, yes, they finish your project and they get their money right away. But they're, they're, they're committed to us for the loan, the length of that loan, so, uh, in other words, if this equipment doesn't start to produce enough, eight years from now, they're still on the hook to either make it work right or make up the difference. So it's not just like guaranteed for a year, it's the whole, whole loan.
Any comments from the board?
The only thing I want to see is the thing from Davenport.
What's that?
Yep.
Yeah, we need to see what's, make sure Davenport, make sure we're not into, uh, getting ourselves over, overextended.
And beyond that, it's, I mean, it's been cost-effective so far.
How long before we can get some results back from?
I expect to be able to talk somebody tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I, I just want to say, I, I was not on the board at the time that this was done. I was very skeptical. I was very skeptical. Uh, and I was also concerned about tearing out new equipment, basically, to put in more new equipment. And, uh, I followed it very, very closely, and I am pleasantly surprised at what the results have been, very pleasantly surprised. So, uh, because I was not, I was not happy with it. I'll be the first one to do it. It concerned me because of the debt against the county and what it was going to hold the county back from doing. And I didn't, really did not think that the return would be as good as it's been. So, kudos to everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
I knew from the beginning it was the work.
So we didn't count either one of your votes.
Thank you for, thank you for having us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Before, what, what's the next move then?
I guess our, our, our move is to find out, uh, what Davenport has to say, and then we need to, uh, do we need to hold a vote on this, uh?
That's kind of the peculiar state that we can find ourselves in. The, the school board certainly has every authority to do this on their own independently, without just towards, uh, approval, disapproval, recurrence. Um, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll drill down. I, I think there's been enough movements with budgets going up and our ratios coming down, that, that this amount of money should fit within that. The disclaimer that this does go against the county's debt was one I wanted certainly to make, to make everybody, you all already knew that. Um, but as soon as we, uh, learn from Davenport, I'll communicate that to you all.
Well, I would think if, if, if Davenport's not, uh, not, uh, concerned about this, I would, I would, uh, say that we should go ahead.
One, one of the things, rightly so, about steel and contracts and tons of the essence and things like that.
So why don't, uh?
We'll communicate back to the board of what the findings and we'll make a judgment on what, what that really means and whether it's significant or not.
We have our board meeting on, uh, just Monday nights.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or can we do a contingency benefit?
Can we get something back to them on Monday so they can move ahead?
Yeah, as soon as we communicate to you, I will in turn communicate back to.
When will you be together to vote on it?
As far as the board?
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like we don't need to.
Okay, it seems to me that you didn't vote, it's a consensus.
We're not, we're not going to vote. Uh, you've got a, 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 uh, somewhat of a nod, uh, subject to the discussion from Davenport.
Okay.
If we're concerned, we'll get back to you on that, but other than that.
One of the biggest reasons for the concern is communication system.
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Communication system is something that will affect everyone in and passing through this county, and we want to make sure we have that capacity.
We understand that, yeah. But we've already paid five hundred thousand off on that, so we're really only asking for seven hundred. And you know, and again, we're, we're working within the time constraint here too, with school and that kind of thing.
Well, what we'll do is if, uh, there, uh, Mr. David, we're toward that, he and I'll communicate this week, uh, with both boards. And then we'll, we'll, we'll have.
How about if we operate that there is no showstopper unless we learn?
Okay.
Now, what, I mean, have you, have you already set out the RFP for your roof, or are you setting up to do that, or?
We're all set to go once you guys approve their loan already. That's all done. We have pricing, everything's in.
I did that through the IGA process and have, uh.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's just no.
You do have the black shirt on.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we welcome you to this meeting. We give you respect and acknowledge you as our source of wisdom. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions, that we may govern as you would. Help us to accomplish our tasks while displaying your character. Amen. All right. Uh, any changes to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're off and running. First item is a presentation of resolution of appreciation for Officer Perry Grimes.
Right over here. All right. Resolution of appreciation for Officer Perry Grimes of the Central Virginia Regional Jail. Whereas Officer Perry Grimes has announced his retirement from the Central Virginia Regional Jail after a long and accomplished tenure of twenty-five years. And whereas over the last several years, Officer Grimes has been an integral part of the Central Virginia Regional Jail workforce. A program sponsored by the jail to provide inmates work detailed services to the member jurisdictions of the jail authority, which has been a great success. And whereas across our community, Officer Grimes and the workforce have partnered with many county departments, including Parks and Recreation, the Animal Shelter, the Airport, Public Works, the Landfill and Administration. And Officer Grimes has taken the lead in coordinating, facilitating and overseeing the various projects throughout his tenure with the workforce. And whereas Officer Grimes' management of the workforce has included over two hundred hours of mowing, trimming, weeding, spraying, raking, and trash pickup at the Barbersville Community Park and Booster Park Inn. Installation of a new shed and fence post boards at the playground, the reattaching of a new backstop at the wall field at Barbersville Community Park, and the painting of the dugouts at Booster Park. And whereas Officer Grimes has also overseen the workforce in the patching of the driveway leading to the Animal Shelter, painting and moving of cages inside the Animal Shelter, mowing and trimming at the Animal Shelter and the Airport, assistance with landfill projects and many miles of roadside trash cleanup. And whereas throughout his service with the workforce, Officer Grimes has developed a respectful and working relationship with the inmates, using the program as a learning experience, one in which he instilled his sense of pride and value of presentation to the inmates. In turn, teaching the inmates to appreciate their work and attention to detail. And whereas the work of Officer Grimes and the workforce is reflected throughout the county, and their beautification efforts and attentive work have ultimately led to making the county a better place for citizens to live and play. Now, therefore be it resolved on this ninth day of June, two thousand fifteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisor hereby extends its admiration and appreciation to Officer Perry Grimes for his accomplishments, dedication and service to the County of Orange through the workforce program. Signed, Leader H. Frame, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
She did another one too, all right. Again, good luck and thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the presentation of accommodation for the sesquicentennial committee.
Got it.
There's that word again.
That might be the last time you have to.
Okay, all right. Do I need to come out there?
No, you can stay back there.
All right, okay.
You can take your seat, no. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is my pleasure to come to you this evening and, um, make you aware of accommodation that we received from the General Assembly of Virginia for our Orange County Sesquicentennial Committee, and I have a few members of the Sesquicentennial Committee in the audience, and I'm going to read down through all the members, and when your name is called, if you wouldn't mind, please standing so that you can get acknowledged. Alan Alterman, Bill Graham, Clay Corbin, Craig Rains, Dolores McDaniel, Frank Walker, Greg Murts, Ken Tillman, Mandy Dean, Matt Reeves, Mark Leach, Patty Palmer, Pete Rainey, Phil Odebear, Robin Nemo, Sharon Elswick and Steve Sylvia. Without these individuals and their hard work and dedication to Orange County, this commendation would not have been, uh, possible at all. Um, and the commendation reads, "The General Assembly of Virginia, commendation, the Senate and the House of Delegates of the Commonwealth of Virginia, hereby offer sincerest gratitude to the Orange County Sesquicentennial Committee in recognition of their commitment, dedication and partnership with the Virginia Sesquicentennial of the American Civil War Commission." Offered by Speaker William J. Howe on May twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. And if it so pleases the board, we'd like to get this framed and hung here in the board supervisors' meeting room.
Maybe it's our turn to applaud the people out in the audience. How about that? And, uh, maybe it would be useful to get a picture of them all grouped together with, getting, uh, and showing the, uh,
Absolutely.
the commendation.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, go ahead.
Come on down. You wanted to get your picture taken again.
I wasn't looking for myself.
You wanted to get your picture taken again, so come on down.
I want to make sure this gets to the, uh, Orange County review, so the citizens of the committee of the community know who have, uh, been out here busting their tail making this all work.
Over here, over here in the commendation corner.
Here, so I'll go and hold that. I've got my picture taken enough, so y'all go and.
You need to, uh, Director, uh, Brian, she needs to be in this picture. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Can we get to everybody here? Is this good? All right. In closer. I want to make sure the citizens know who, who's, uh, that's done their thing to help us out. And thank you all. Thank you all. Sure enough. All right. And Frank.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. They just put that there, it's all that thing jumping around. All right. We are very fortunate to have the, uh, people willing to serve in this, in this capacity. All right. Uh, next item of business is the public comment. Uh, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Then we move on to the consent agenda.
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
No lawnmowers today.
All right. Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present the snapshot that was in your brochure or your packet. Couple of things from that. We had successful spring youth programs and gymnastics, Michael Smile and karate. Our adult programs, we had karate and tai chi, and we are starting another new tai chi session tonight, so that's been successful. Fifteen wiser programs. We had a wood carving class at Barbersville Park and our former sheriff, Bill Faulkner, if you all, any of you all have been around for a while, he signed up and was actually first one to sign up for the next class. He's making a hound dog in the next carving session, so.
Not using the backstop, is it?
No, not using the backstop. Uh, King's Dominion tickets, our Spring Savings Day tickets. We sold eighty-five this spring compared to fifty-two the year before and forty-two the year before that, so things are on the rise with that. We're serving a lot of folks. And our Regal movie tickets are still very popular. We are busy gearing up for our playing in the park event on Friday, July third at Booster Park. The gates open at five and entertainment starts at five forty-five and goes until fireworks at dark, which is around nine thirty-ish. We have local entertainment, all free, not paying anybody, local folks showcasing their talents. We have some local food vendors this year. Funnel Cake Cafe from Locust Grove area has funnel cakes and fried Oreos, uh, Snickers and Twinkies, I think. The Streit's Donuts, which are a mobile unit they set up here in town on Mondays in Gordonsville, one other day of the week. Brewster's Ice Cream, which is from Madison, but they do a lot of events in Orange. And Home Fried, which is Vincent Seal, who is one of the Gordonsville Chicken Festival a couple of times. He's doing burgers, dogs and chicken, so. We have lots of local folks providing food this year, and we hope, I think, Mr. Goodman's been out a few times to enjoy that. We've, uh, raised some extra money for the fireworks this year, so we're going to have a little bigger display. I wasn't gonna show a video thing this year, but, uh, we had our Rapid安River Day Saturday, which is, we call it Rapid安River Day, a special day for our special friends with autism. And we had six participants and twenty-one family and volunteers for twenty-seven folks out there, and, uh, I think we're almost ready to go.
There we go.
This is another, uh, heavily wired, uh?
There's no music.
No sound.
I can't touch this, so.
But you were in the room.
Alright, our Rapid安River Day twenty fifteen. This is Beth Seal, who runs Rapid安River Kayak Company. For three years in a row, she's opened her home and business to us and provided guidance and equipment for our event. These are some of our parents that standing on the shore, the lady in the pink is Ann Lawrence Grassley, who was the spearhead behind this event two years ago. She came to me and said, I have a five-year-old with autism, what kinda programs do you offer? And I said, actually none, but what do you wanna do? And I don't think she'd ever heard that before, so we came up, I talked to Beth about river programs, and we decided to combine the two, and came up with our Rapid安River Day, and these are our kids. This is Pierce, this is Ann's son, he is inspiration for this program. This is Ben, he has been my buddy for all three years of the event. This is Sean, he's a new participant this year. This is John, he was there the first year but missed last year when we had to reschedule, but came back for this year. Tanner, who is another new participant this year. And Zach, who also missed the fir-, I mean, made the first one, missed last year with the rescheduling. The gentleman in the red hat is Jim Galls, he works as the Crisis Counselor at the Kes- Little, Little School in Keswick. Uh, it's a therapeutic boarding school for kids ages ten to fifteen, and they have kids from all over the world. Um, very intelligent kids, but have autism and are learning to deal with life with that as well. Uh, he came all the way from Charlottesville, they bring a group with Beth to do a kayaking trip, and he heard about it and decided to come back and help us out. This is Ben's little brother and grandmother floating down the river. This next picture I like, it looks like it's a lot deeper, it's only about a foot, foot and a half, he's bumping along the bottom the whole time, but the picture's really neat. This is, uh, Tanner's mom waiting to catch one of the other little siblings. These are some of our volunteers, we tethered the tube, so no one can float away on them, we'll push them out in the current and let them ride down. And, uh, they actually walked up through a field, there's a better picture later, and got in and floated down, and just did that continuously, it was a pretty cool experience. Uh, John having a good time splashing me and getting me wet. This is a view up the river, where you can see a lot of our participants in. The little, small patch of grass, little island grass you see way in the background, that's where they would walk up and put in there and just float slowly on down the river. It was quite an experience. Couple of our volunteers. Uh, Heather from the Treasurer's Office downstairs brought her, her fiancee, daughter, and son to volunteer with us, and that was Sean in the kayak. And this is Tanner and Eric, Heather's fiancee, in the little small, sit-on-top kayak. And these next two pictures kinda sum up our day. This is Sean having a good time getting Jason quite wet, and then this next one says it all, there's Ben, and that kinda describes our whole day. That's it, and, um, we'll keep doing the things we're doing, any questions from?
Thank you, Dan.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, next is the reappointment of the Tourist Advisory Committee.
Hello again. Um, you should have in your possession a memo that I did with reappointments to the Tourism Advisory Committee. There was one revision, late revision, I made a mistake on there, the two-year term should have the expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The one-year terms at the end of the memo are still two thousand sixteen, but the two-year terms are two thousand seventeen. Uh, Jay Billy, Chairman of the Tourism Advisory Committee, and myself have reached out to, um, all of the, uh, appointees whose terms were expiring, to make sure that they wanted to re-up, and all but one did. They're very pleased with the progress of the Tourism Advisory Committee and still wanted to be an integral part of that progress. So, the only one that couldn't, uh, due to scheduling constraints was Bonnie Robinson from Wall Enterprises, she represented our retail component. And so we've reached out to a couple of different individuals, asking them if they would be interested, um, Hana Capus and Gail Danos from Melrose. So we're waiting for responses from them, if we do not get responses from them, then we will, uh, Jay and I will work together to, um, uh, nominate some other individuals and have conversations with them, and then we'll bring that information back to y'all once that is firmed up with them. So I'm just bringing this to you this evening to see if the board would want to reappoint these individuals.
So moved?
Second. Moved and second, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, but just briefly give you an update on working in this committee, I, my opinion is they're getting some legs. Mr. Frame and myself serve on, on that committee, um, they have really kind of, in a year's time, at least since I've been here, come together. Um, I think the Tourism Economic Impact Study has given them a lot to think about, because there were recommendations in there of what they could do collectively, or the county could do to aid, uh, the growth of tourism. Uh, also, we will be bringing forward, uh, if you all remember, uh, where we discontinued the visitor center at Piedmont Crossroads.
Piedmont Crossroads Visitor Center.
Center in Louisiana, uh, those funds were going to be recommitted to the Tourism Advisory Committee. It's, uh, it could be about seven thousand, and we got some savings, so it may be up to about eleven thousand dollars. That through a process, they will s- figure out what to do with those dollars to collectively market the county for, for all their benefit. I think it'd be appropriate, once they figure out what they're spending it on, is to come back here and report to the board what they're going to be doing with that, and then a follow-up of what actually transpired once they've spent.
Absolutely, and we're, um, at the end stages of our Drive Tourism workshops that we do with Virginia Tourism Corporation. Our last one, Workshop C, will be June thirtieth, and so we're supposed to be getting a graduation from the program and.